Counselor, would you mind giving me a motion to reconvene?
I'll move to reconvene.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Counselor, Pivoy, enjoy the rest of your meal. Don't choke on us, please. Okay, all right. No, I mean seriously. I'm serious when I say that. We have a 7-F right to recovery request, so if you don't mind, we're going to deal with this one. It shouldn't take too much time. As you can see, it is a group of students who have in the past fundraised for veterans. They are U.S. veterans and they are biking from coast to coast. This year, they are doing a little bit of a trip through Canada. And really, the extent to what we could participate in is really by an in-kind donation of the campground and maybe hosting a barbecue in their honor, inviting the Legion or the Lions Club to help us with the barbecue, something of that sort.
Mayor, can we even do an in-kind donation of the campground because it's now subcontracted up?
That is something we can because it is still our campground.
Yep, that's part of the contract. We've done before.
Okay. Maybe Jeff can talk to that more specifically. Can we offer an in-kind donation of a campground that is under lease?
Yeah, the quick logistics is I just tell them not to charge them, but still bill us for their 55%.
Exactly.
For their 55%?
Yeah, so we'd still pay 55% of the night because we don't need to penalize them.
So the extent, what have you as a group of young people that come really ambassador for their country, but who can then go back to their country as ambassadors for our country? And it's a little bit of a two-way street goodwill. So I personally don't have an issue extending an in-kind donation of $400. Would that be something that someone is willing to put a motion forward?
I'd be glad to make that motion that we do an in-kind donation for this project for the right
Right to recovery request.
Right to recovery youth group.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor?
They've also asked if anybody would be interested in riding into town with them.
Yes, that is something that is interesting. I think we will need to advertise that somehow. And I'm sure we can find a group of young people that would, or families that would like to participate in something like that. We have some families who are veterans in this town.
But they meet them at the border, like?
Yeah, I'd meet them at the border.
Well, they typically come in from, from, from there.
That's ambitious. I was gonna meet them at the little, uh...
Top of the South Hill.
Right, from the Legion there.
That would be a bad thing to start the Legion. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right.
So that was worded up to, is that right?
Yeah, up to $400.
Is that just for the donation to the campground?
Oh, it's $400 of the meal.
It includes for the barbecue as well.
And the buffet breakfast.
Just, it's one or the other.
One or the other.
Yeah.
Has the service club been notified of this?
It's up to four.
Has the service club been notified of this, maybe, maybe a brewery or somebody like that?
Not at this point, but the Legion, I think the Legion would be probably a good fit too.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, it says probably quite a few things we can do. Can you give me the timeframe? It's in July sometime.
June 24th.
End of June?
June 24th.
Okay, June 24th.
And just for my clarification, the fund this would come out of is which one?
We have the donations, G L.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So now we go back to the Max Low electrical installation charges. And I want to thank you, Leonard, for coming here. Leonard, essentially, what we need you to help us understand is a little bit the breakdown of the billing that you have for them. And give us a sense where we can trim or where we can be a little bit more flexible in the dollar amount.
Okay. Does, Mayor, do yourself and Counsel have the...
Yes, we do.
...sheet? Okay. We can go through this one item at a time. It'd be easier for everyone. Additional items, we'll start at the very top. There are one pole. That is the cost of the pole itself.
Right.
A lot of these materials, there isn't any markup on the material. What we pay is what's passed on, what's built out.
In other words, the material is at cost, right?
The material's at cost.
Right, so that is something that really is, should be a non-negotiable.
That's what I have to, that's what I have to pay, what the town has to pay to buy that material and then...
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's no markup at all whatsoever on it. So one pole out front, the one that's existing there is unable to support the size of transformers. It needs to be changed. The spacing isn't, we won't accommodate the way it's supposed to be.
And you tell me you need three poles?
Nope.
Or three transformers?
Three transformers.
Three transformers, one new pole?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So first one's the pole for the 528. He wanted underground service, looking at that. This was a direct quote and price from our wire provider. It's $13.45 a meter. And it's been 90 meters from the pole to where his meter is at the building.
In other words, it's costly.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
Just a question.
Yes.
Leonard, was, you know, the request for underground, was that from the owner of the property or the leasing?
The existing service at the building is already underground.
Okay.
So in order to change, to go, say, an overhead service, the building owner would need an awful lot of work to do that.
Okay. And would raise the cost substantially?
At their cost, yeah, not ours.
Yeah, of course not.
Yeah, sorry. And then obviously, then the three transformers that's needed for it. $1,500 a piece, $1,560. Actually, let's skip the label. Let's go down to the structure. Everything that we build is done by a standard and we have a structure manual. And every pole you see out there, it has a number assigned to it and a material item list of what is on that pole. Between crossarms, to insulators, to ties to tie the wire in, how many bolts, nuts, washers. So the first structure is the pole with the crossarm. So this is now including, this is just the crossarm, the bolts to hold that on for $257. The second half of that structure for the $1,537, that includes all the brackets to hold the transformers, the bolts for that, all the copper and wire that's needed, the switches that are needed, the lightning arresters that are needed to put on that. And then the balance, that $145 is the grounding for ground rods, copper coming down the pole, the protection for the ground rods. So again, those are at cost.
So Leonard, before we go any farther, what you've done is, is you've at-cost everything out already.
I always do.
Okay, so why do we need to review it? Where can you cut the corners?
Yeah, the materials are at cost.
Okay. So there's no cutting corners on the materials?
No.
Exactly.
No.
Then it becomes a net loss.
Yeah.
Right, and we're not there to take loss.
Okay. Now, looking at the labor portion. There are some things in here. Let's start at the very top. The first one, three-phase sub in the air. This is now part of changing that pole out because it is main feed into town. I think a lot of people would be very upset if we turn the power off to entire town for about three hours. So this is our labor with the trucks to do this, what we call, to do it live, to do it hot with the power still on, to change that pole out. The next item is something for reviewing. We could look at, my preference is any new cable that's put in the ground, we put it in ductwork for the simple fact of if something goes wrong with the cable, at least we can pull it out, pull new stuff in, as opposed to having to dig it all up again. Everything out there right now, other than the new, has been just direct buried in the ground. So a prime example is this service here. If there was duct in the grounds, we could just pull out what's there, pull in the new and carry on. But unfortunately, we gotta dig. If we decide we just don't want to put in the duct, we can, that portion there can be dropped.
What is duct once again?
The second item is laying out the duct, $300. And then the connection of the underground, bringing it up the pole, that's also part of the pipe work, bringing it up the pole and doing the work up at it to the transformers and the work that's needed there. The three-phase structure in the air, this is the additional for transformers and the labor that's involved in framing that pole with the wire and everything that's with that. Obviously, setting the pole is pretty straightforward. Backfilling and digging, we need to trench that from the pole all the way into the building in order to supply them with the new service. Hydrovacuuming is usually given because there is tell us there, I would assume. I know that there is and that's just Tom's rate for hydrovacuuming. And on average, it usually works out to three to four hours for him every time. And then we just have the installation of the duct, which is something that we could, it's just our labor just to put the ductwork together and put it in the ground. So if we do look at this, if there is something, if we want to reduce the ductwork and pulling the cable through the duct, we could look at a reduction of, I would say, about $1,400 on the labor portion.
No, let's go to the ductwork again.
Leonard, so just so I understand, the hydrovacuuming is not done by us. We're subcontracting that out, so that's a cash out. Would you do that? Yeah.
Okay, so now you have machinery. You have material, labor, and machinery, but in your grant, although the machinery is with the labor?
Yes.
Goes together?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any more question for Leonard? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, Leonard's here and I've talked to him. Maybe just quickly explain the minimal benefit of trying to do it as an overhead. It can be done?
It can be done. Obviously, you would be saving under, for the additional, for their $1,300 worth of wire, you would be saving that for an overhead service. The downside is the building owner would need to change their electrical service in the building. Because right now, it comes up in the middle of the building, that's where their meter base is. They would have to complete a pipe that to the corner of the building and at a cost that they would have to bear themselves. And what that would be, I don't know. And whether the building owner would entertain that.
Can you give us even a ballpark idea with something like that? That would help a lot.
Leonard, I'm a proponent of underground. Whenever you can put stuff underground in a duct, I, you know, I know that a lot of you linemen don't like that, but I love it because just for aesthetic reasons, you know. So I'm saying putting the wire in the duct and pulling it up.
Counselor, to me.
So Leonard, even, you know, like it comes underground, you say, to the center of the building? And then it comes up for their paddles and stuff?
That's where their meter base is.
Their meter base?
Yeah.
But I mean, changing to three-phase, they're gonna have to replace that anyway, aren't they?
Uh, they're gonna have to replace the meter base. In this quote, I didn't charge them for the new meter. They have to replace all their switchgear inside the building to accommodate it.
Yeah.
So there is still the cost that they still have to bear for this.
But their ducting or their piping is adequate to pull the three-phase, you know, the extra wires through?
Who knows?
You don't know?
I've never been inside the building and I don't wanna...
Because you'll have, you know, have to pull three conductors. I guess right now, there's probably two conductors in the ground, right?
Yes.
And so then you'll need three conductors in the ground.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So do you just take the service to the...
To the meter base.
To the meter base, so you don't have to go inside?
No, I bring the service to the meter base and it would be out, it would be an electrician at that point then to take it from there.
So they have a meter base on the outside of the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll all have to be changed out.
Any more question for Leonard? Thank you, Leonard. So essentially, two-thirds of the cost that you give us here is really material that should not be tampered with?
I guess.
I think, I think all of it. I think we establish can't be really tampered with. Especially if we're laying the conduit, there's really nothing we can adjust, is that...
Well, there is about $1,500 or so because that is on the high hand.
If we lose the ducting though, the $1,500 is...
Jeff?
You have the ability to choose to not charge any of your own, right? You just have to understand that we have hard costs.
Yeah.
And we would recognize that in the hourly machine and labor rates, there is some margin. There's not $5,000 worth of margin in this project. But there is some sum, but that's what Counsel needs to decide if you deem it equitable to do so.
Yeah, and that brings us to another discussion that we need to have. So if there's no more questions for Leonard, Leonard, thank you so much for helping us understand the breakdown of your estimate. Okay. So Counsel, essentially, there is a proposal for a business that is going to be a rental. And there is a potential for a new business in town in a building for which we already collect taxes. So that won't change. The taxes, the tax base will not change. What will...
Well, that's not completely true.
That's not necessary.
At this point?
The assessment would go up.
Yes.
If I may.
You're retenging that...
Can I tell you why? Can I just tell you why not at this point? It's because assessment is really based on a year and a half past. And so the business was, that particular business was already occupied at the time, was not a vacant one. So for that reason, a year and a half past, there was a business already occupying that. Therefore, the assessment will roll on that back.
All right, but I can tell you, when I put $20,000 worth into my house or in any other real estate, the assessment eventually catches up to me.
Correct.
So it will increase.
Yes.
It'll attach eventually, but it's not something to see right away.
What I'm trying to say is right now, the tax base is not different.
We can ask for a reassessment.
As the improvement is made, in time, it will change. Yes, absolutely.
But we can request a reassessment on it.
Well, in all honesty, I don't think it would go up enough to justify.
Right now, what we need to decide is, on a principle of fairness to another business that had to put their own connection at the cost of $25,000, is it fair to consider a waiver of $14,000? If not, it would be fair to look at it as, they were talking about, is it a possibility to do cost sharing? We don't have the owner of the building here. The community future possibility exists. There is, Counsel Pivoy asked, and there was a willingness maybe to entertain that. I really think that if the owner was to be the recipient of that free interest-free loan, that can be factored in into the lease.
So if I might, the reason why we don't have very many of those loans out is from a practical business perspective, it doesn't make sense to do them. And that's why nobody's doing them. That's the bottom line. If it made business sense, we would have three or four applications every single year. There's lots of buildings that need stuff done to them and we have them. It doesn't because it saves them $400 or $500 a year in interest at the top end. It's just, it's not a great benefit. It wouldn't factor into their decision on this in any way, shape, or form.
The way I view it is, from what I'm hearing him say, essentially, they're looking at it as from a new business venture, cash, they're trying to preserve as much as they can. And so if it can be built in their lease rather than as an outright $10,000, $14,000 money out of their pocket, it's more palatable and it's easier to absorb, right? So that is possibly why I'm saying it could be a possibility offered to the owner. And they can decide whether to do it through their lease. Would that make sense? That could be a recommendation we have. The other one is really, are we willing to kind of look at it and say to ourselves, it's worth trying to attract a new business that has potential for employment? And are we willing to help on that bill regarding the labor and material? Or labor and machinery, I mean. Is that something we're willing to look at or not? Because if we're not willing to entertain, it's very simple. Then we go back to administration and tell them, no. But with a caveat, this...
It's not as if we have 25 businesses knocking at our doors, knocking them down to try and establish a business in this community. And I think we need to do what we possibly can do within our abilities to do it to encourage business to come here and set up shop.
All right. So personally, I would not see more than $4,500, $5,000. I, to me, that would be really my limit. I could not start to dig into the material that is already at cost. It bothers me.
Didn't we give a break to the shop and this property up here?
Okay, I'm going to tell you...
And that was considerable?
While we considered buying product.
Yeah, yeah.
I realized that.
There was a precedent where we did do something.
Yeah, we did something, not on the particular...
We ran some water lines and sewer lines in there, didn't we?
But we offered some kind of incentive, if you want to call it this way.
Yeah, I think we as a council have discussed many times the desire to have, I mean, this is an electrical request, you know, for decision. We've talked about having incentives on our electrical system for businesses.
Exactly right.
And so I really like this recommendation from administration to pursue an electrical system investment policy.
Yeah.
I think, so maybe my question is to administration, is it possible we could create something quickly? I know I'm a short.
Counselor Pivoy, we were mulling that one over.
And one thing I recognize is that, you know, with three-phase electrical, ideally, this business will be sucking a lot of juice through. So we will be seeing this cost recovery on their electric bill as a municipality, but go ahead.
It could be an investment. I mean, you know, that's one thing that Fortis has that advantage.
That's the reason why Fortis does.
Right, that's the reason. Yeah, and they do. And I mean, you know, when they were offering to buy our system, that was one of the things that was kind of tugging me in that direction is because that is a very positive thing, you know, for economic development for our community is if, if, you know, people can save, you know, have an incentive beyond on the power installation.
But Pinocchio has a policy investment.
Yes, I do have one.
Policy?
So the question is quickly. When Max first came a couple of weeks ago, I started looking into this notion of the investment policy. And I have the terms of reference that Pinocchio used to establish theirs. I don't have their official policy yet, but Kevin Phillips helped them craft their investment policy. It has to be quite comprehensive because an investment program on your electrical utility requires approval from the AUC.
Right.
Yeah.
It isn't solely in your discretion as a camp. Now, my thought is that if you have it crafted after ones that exist, there's no reason you shouldn't get approval from the AUC. So if you're crafting them relative to Pinocchio's or Fortis', I spoke with Fortis today and they sent me the parameters around their investment policy. The unknown, I was gonna see if I could determine roughly what that would mean for Mr. Lowe. Their policy essentially says it's $5,300 plus $930 or so per kilowatt hour of peak demand over a certain number. Well, Max doesn't know his peak demand yet. So he doesn't actually know what that investment looks like from Fortis and Pincher Creek yet. Probably is at least $5,300. But above and beyond that, he doesn't know because they've got to determine that peak demand. So, you know, it is, it's a very interesting scenario where 120 meters to the north, they would have an investment incentive from Fortis. Because they would leave the town and be in, on the reserve or on the county. They'd be eligible for the investment. But in town, that isn't something. So could it be done by April 1st? No, it couldn't. It simply is something that, it's actually probably a policy, well, maybe even a bylaw, it's part of the utility bylaw. It would be a piece you'd probably need a public hearing on. Because you'd be affecting your utility bylaw, probably.
Yeah.
And it also would require AUC approval, which your guess is as good as mine as to how long that would take. But my guess is 90 days, you know, on the, I would guess at least 90 days for AUC. But I think this is a catalyst to start looking at an investment program. Within reason, what it basically means is Counsel will invest X amount of dollars per distribution rate class. So you shouldn't put $5,300 into a residential connection. The return on investment's not there.
Yeah.
But on a three-phase medium commercial, well, they've probably got a $400 or $500 or $250, $300 distribution charge a month. You know, at that kind of an outfit. So all of a sudden, that's making a little more economic sense. So yes, I, my recommendation is, in your background, is that we investigate it. But no, it's not something that could be in place to accommodate Mr. Lowe.
Okay. All right. So here, we need to float a few numbers there. When I heard Max talk, he said he can feel that the owner would be willing to share with them. And if we, with the town, create a little better partnership, there is more incentive for him to stay in this town than to go in Pincher Creek. I kind of like that idea. What we need to figure out and what would be the proper reasoning and a fair principle to be used in order to have a business installed in town at a cost that is not prohibitive and that it can be fairly justified at all.
Quick question, and administration may be the one that needs to answer this for me. But when we put in curbs and gutters in someplace, do we, like a lot of when I did that when I lived in Raymond, that was a $3,000 cost or whatever, that they just added it to my tax assessment over the next five or 10 years? I can't remember what it was, but do we do the same thing here?
You talk about the levy, your specific levy, that's not for electrical to...
Not in the way you described it. So what you're describing is probably a local improvement. Is probably what that is. So you can buy local improvement if you have, it's a formula. You need, you need a majority of the residents owning X amount percent of the land. So there's a bit of a formula. And if you have that, then all the residents in that area are bound to an additional tax to reimburse overtime. And you can set the terms, to reimburse overtime that additional cost. So the issue with this one is the benefit is specific to a property and it wouldn't qualify as a local improvement.
Sure.
Okay.
Something like that could potentially, I mean, you have, there is legislation that would allow for certain types of business taxes. I just am not familiar enough to say if that would have to apply to a class or area or if it can be one-off. I'm just not sure. But I think what you're describing is a local improvement.
Okay. So you get where I'm going with that question though, right? Like if we could say, okay, we'll subsidize $5,000, but we're gonna increase your taxes by $300 a year until it's paid off or...
Right. Well, I understand what you're saying.
I don't know if it's possible. I was just asking a question.
I don't quite know what to do.
I, I, I think we need to look to the future too with a business like this. I mean, it's a, it's a new business and it's grown over the past five years for him. He's done fairly well. Seems to be growing all the time. And I like the idea, if he does start a franchise, who knows where this could go? And if we're home base, it's a benefit to us in the community. At this point, time is three people. But if this becomes big, I mean, every franchise starts off small and they grow exponentially. Some of them do. And if we become their headquarters, hey, you never know where we go. And it's, it's good for us, for a small investment of $5,000 or $6,000 bucks. I think it's good for us.
All right. So here, last... So here, let's try to see some interest here. Councilor Barfus, are you willing to put a motion forward? Or are you still trying to discuss that?
I'm still really, really struggling here because I'm actually of two separate minds on this issue. As a landowner myself, owning some commercial property here in town, I have just recently put $12,000 of my own money into renovating a property that I leased out. As the landowner, I incurred all of that cost. And then I'll recoup that through rent over the next five years. But that's part of being a landowner. And so there's a part of me that says, you know, this really is the discussion between Max and the owner of the land. On the other side of it, I do really feel strongly that as a council, we need to find ways to help encourage those businesses to get here in town. That it's more than just the tax revenue. It's the jobs and the atmosphere of a growing community that that helps to foster. And that alone can help us to grow other businesses if businesses are starting to open and do well. So I'm still struggling kind of where I'm personally at on that. Because I've been on both sides of that equation.
I understand that. Maybe what we need to do then is maybe detach ourselves from our personal experience and try to have a more global view as to what is, what could be good for the community? And maybe detach ourselves.
Mayor Carmon, Councilor Barfus spent $12,000 on his business to encourage business and to update his business. This individual is still going to spend probably $12,000 on this business because there's all these modifications to put a kitchen in, to bring their power from the base throughout the building, all their switches and everything else and the wiring and everything, and the meter bases and everything is going to have to be changed. So that is.
On top of.
Yeah, on top of everything. So we need to realize, you know, like Councilor Barfus said, what is our prime desire here? Is it to bring businesses to town so that we have an ongoing business? Or are we worried about how much the individual business is going to spend modifying their building or their business to encourage business?
Yeah, but also.
There's a fairness, what I was getting at, there wasn't the fact that I spent a bunch of money.
It's the principle of fairness.
There's, is it government's role to be subsidizing businesses to bring them in all the time? I think there's a role there for us. I'm just not sure where that line is yet.
Can you give administration a sense to talk? What do you want to, don't pin, okay. Councilor Pivoy.
So, you know, if we're talking about the taxpayer foot in this bill, that's a really ugly proposition. But when you look at our electrical utility, you know, which is a revenue generating utility, we've got, you know, this potential for investment for the purpose of the revenue. So we, you know, in the recommendations to pull it out of, you know, this fund or that fund, I'd almost say, pull it out of electrical revenue and it'll get back in there. I mean, I don't know how policies, how system investment policies are, you know, where that funding comes from. But I think ultimately what we're looking at is, hey, we're not asking the taxpayer to pay this ultimately, because this will go back in to that, you know, the electrical system will make up for this in increased electrical over X number of years, whatever that factor is.
Essentially, where we're struggling right now is for lack of policy. We don't have an investment policy. So essentially, what we need is almost to have a motion in principle to develop a policy for administration to bring that forward. That's the first thing we need to do. That's a total lack. We're realizing that, it's a gap. And this is why we have so many discussions. Had we had that in place, the discussion would be there. Right now, we have an opportunity and we have a gap. And the gap we can't fill. So I think the first thing we need to do is maybe to deal with that notion of, let's develop a policy. It won't be in place and then we need to, secondly, decide how we're going to handle that.
So on that basis, I'd be willing to make a motion if that's what's required.
Yes, I think it is.
For us to work at putting together that investment policy. I think that that fits into the whole idea, as Councilor Pivoy pointed out, our electrical utility is in fact, we don't call it a business, but it is a business.
It is a business model.
And should be run as a business, which means investing in improving its revenues. And so from that perspective, I think this is something that we definitely need to be looking at. And I'm prepared to make that motion.
Okay, so here we have a motion. Anybody needs to ask a question, break out in there?
Yeah, just, it's kind of a comment, not so much a question. I follow the Carson Disguston page quite a bit.
That's a must.
I still do. There's, I don't comment on it, I follow it.
I'm just giving you a.
But I know, I see a lot of people saying, what's the town of Carson doing to promote business? I hear that often on the street as well. And there are people out there, our citizens, who want to see our community grow. And they want businesses to come in. Because they're concerned down the road. If we don't start now, it's going to take forever. And for that reason, I think that this policy needs to be in place. And I think we need to help out with this.
Okay, we have a policy, we have a motion on the floor. More questions or comments?
I love the idea of this motion and moving forward. Because, because the motion sets the date of, everything prior to this, we didn't have this motion, right? Now we've got this motion. Anybody who feels like they were somehow cheated under old policies, I'm sorry, those were the policies at the time. We have a new policy that we're working on. I would even say, and maybe what we do is we follow your motion, we vote on it, and then with another motion or make an amendment to yours, is that this somehow be, this particular project, a pilot for, and granted, we butcher it, you know? And then we say, boy, we really did a bad job on the last one. But we've retweeted since then and everything moving forward is just awesome. That first one was a joke and, you know.
So that doesn't come to pass.
Councilor Pivoy, hopefully we're not involved, but anyway.
The terms of the first one, the terms of the first one might not be quite, they might not make as good a sense. Because we don't have that much time.
But it is an experiment.
Okay, hold on a second. Councilor Vanry.
This is a comment, I'm in favor of the motion. But I'm also looking at the future. These guys are operating this kitchen six months out of the year. April to.
They're looking year-round.
Now, what I'm wondering and what I've got in the back of my mind, are they going to want to operate this business year-round and establish another business in town?
We do not know.
No, we don't.
We do not know. But there's potential. There's potential for an entrepreneur to use that and to launch something.
He, Max made the comment that he was looking down the road to the future for other businesses. He's got two other ideas right now on.
Other products.
Other products.
That tie in with his existing business.
Yes, but he's talking down the road. So I think there's good merit there.
Council, we have a motion to approve the, in principle, the development of an investment policy for our electrical use, usage. So, all in favor? Thank you. So this is a policy, at least we're moving in the right direction. And I'm happy for that. Next is, let's not butcher the whole thing.
I'll be responsible.
No butchering allowed here.
Councilor, before you move on, can I remind that Fortis, according to Jeff and what he gathered for information, the base is $5,300. So I would say that should be a good base for us. It's 53 is a good base, it's about one-third, a little bit more. And I would say, personally, I think it's a good figure. But, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, you know, different projects, different things. I think that since the intention was, you know, that a three-way split was reasonable, I think that we just take a third of the number here. And we say, hey, we'll take care of that third. And then the other two parties each take their thirds.
It's 15,000 divided by 3.
That wasn't exactly what he said. So we need, what he said was a third split, not including the labor, was what they were. And I think that may be a little more than, but we need to know where they were coming from.
Sure, sure.
But here is where we can, as council, decide what we call a third. For us, councilpeople, if I hear you well, you're talking a third of the total cost.
Right, yeah. Well, what I understand from the letter is it's not much different than what's here.
Yeah, it's pretty close. So we would be talking labor and machinery.
I mean, I think it's, you know.
What I was kind of thinking in my mind, if we were to look at this, was, originally, I was thinking in terms of, okay, well, we can, we'll do the labor portion. But there is a portion of that that is actual cash out of our pocket. That it's not just our employees.
Which is a little bit of a par.
About $700, right? So if you're Tom, yeah, right. So that's why I was clarifying that.
It would come to $4,000 then.
So, well, his bill was $700. So we'd be looking at about $50, $5100 would be the labor costs that there. I would have, I think that would be fine. That's in that range of that $5,300 that Fortis does.
Do you want to make a motion, Councilor?
I'll make a motion that we subsidize $5100 of the labor costs there.
To be taken from, to be taken from the electrical.
To take, to come out of the electrical, because I think that's where it should come from. It's part of that business.
To come out of the electrical revenue account.
Yes.
All right. Councilor Edmonds.
I have a problem. We had, in the previous council, we had somebody come to us that was going to put in a strip mall. And there was a transformer right in front of the property. And he didn't want to pay for three connections to that transformer. He only wanted to pay for one. And we turned it down.
Former non-legal.
Well, but it was, so how do you justify now saying, okay, well, now we're going to give some money?
Because we just made a motion that we want to put together a policy to be doing some of that.
Right. But in the, prior to that.
We had no policy.
We didn't have no policy.
But we didn't get a strip mall either.
That's right. So that shows where we were maybe not making a wise decision.
So what happens? What happens if they come back with the same proposal?
Then they have the right to the same.
Now we can sit there and bullshit.
Then they have the right to the same fair treatment and under the same policy or direction.
We felt we were being fair with him because we turned down other ones prior to that.
Because we had no policy. You see what happens when you have no policy, that's what happens.
We can't be going backwards anymore.
When you don't have a policy, you cannot make a good decision. I'm afraid to say we're learning that pretty quickly.
Mayor, have we got any money in the electrical right now?
Yes, sir.
Well, just a minute, we just, we're running on our 2014 budget or 2015 budget. We haven't made out a new budget. I think we need to turn to administration and say, hey, where would you suggest that this money comes from?
It's what he suggested, it's what he said so.
He already suggested the KVE retrofit capital or land reserve.
Okay, I've been taking some notes. I'm going to try to.
Did he clean us all up here?
No, not at all. You know what my recommendation was and I'm not staking a position. I just want to clarify a few things. To Councilor Edmonds' point, and it was Councilor Edmonds, I remember driving this, that you do have a policy surrounding this and it's that the private developer pays the cost of development. So it's not that you're not operating under a policy with regards to this, you are. Your policy is just contrary to where you want to go now, which is perfectly fine. If that's where the majority of council goes, we switch gears and go that way. As far as the dollars, the labor is already budgeted in its entirety. We have budgeted to have those guys all year long. And that's what you're proposing to wait. I don't actually draw it from anywhere. I've already budgeted for the labor.
All right.
So they're here, they're, we're planning on paying them to work. We just will not be billing for that portion if that's the direction council chooses to go. One of the things, Councilor Edmonds, and this is going to be an interesting point of this debate, and really, I'm just kind of cleaning up a bunch of things you were speaking to. But I know the proposal you're talking about with the transformer. One thing that needs to be key in this going forward is this is an investment in new or enhanced services. If the transformer's on the site and it's already sitting there, we wouldn't be investing a whole bunch because it's not a new or enhanced service. Now, this one has, your example had a whole host of other details around it. But this isn't something that if a building owner that already has electrical wants to put it underground or wants to simply move the poles for his convenience, I don't see this applying there. It doesn't bring us any additional revenue on the status quo we've already brought. That needs to be a key piece, is that return on investment piece. Obviously, council will have that discretion as we go forward. But those are things that AUC is going to look at as well. And then lastly, normally, if you were having this conversation under almost any other circumstance, I would come up with the New West Trade Partnership and say, you cannot under law offer incentives to a private company.
That's right.
But this one's a little different because you're not competing against another municipality.
Correct.
And that's the subtle difference. So I just want to counsel to be aware that in this case, the Northwest Trade, New West Partnership is there to prohibit incentives that draws one business away from a municipality. It's to prevent municipalities from offering incentives that draw them away from other municipalities. What you're intending to do is create parity with the other municipality. But that can also become a race to the bottom if that's the game you want to engage in. So I would tell you to be cautious there. But at the same time, you're not competing against a public entity. So the New West Trade Partnership is relatively mute on that point. So I don't have a position where that would fall. So just as an interesting side for anybody wondering about the legality of incentive. If it was under another circumstance, I would recommend some caution. But this one's very unique. The other thing that we don't know as far as this specific project today is, Fortis' rate is highly based on peak demand. Now, there is a base, I agree. But it's highly based on peak demand, that's the pivot here, we don't know. So I think if you're entertaining this, if you choose to, that you make sure you don't exceed that base amount simply because we don't know what Fortis' investment looks like. Because peak demand is unknown. And it sounds like that's where you're going. I just, there's a number of things I thought I'd feel better if I had said them before you made your motion than if I hadn't.
So the baseline is $5,300 in current year, right?
I'll give you the exact dollar.
At $5100.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Thank you for that clarification. And Councilor Edmonds, what I was trying to say is that we didn't have an investment policy rather than no policy. And thank you, Jeff, for correcting me there, I appreciate that. Okay, so any more questions regarding that or can we vote?
Well, I was just curious, and maybe this is a question for Jeff. In drafting this new pilot under this eventual policy that we hope to have, would it be wise to maybe get a contract with them stating, you know, hey, we understand this is going to be the terms and blah, blah, blah? And, you know, based on a electrical investment? Would that, and get them to sign that with the town so that there's a contract in place for this?
What am I obligating them to? I just need to understand that.
There's no policy.
Once three-phase goes there, they're going to pay the rates of three-phase, whether the building's empty or not anymore.
Right now, so I guess what I'm looking at is in the Fortis contracts, and I don't know if we even know, but do they increase it for a while to try to repay? And then it goes back down or is it just the one rate?
This is the aspect, you're quite correct there. Because from what we understand is that the rate of electrical use, usage per kilowatt is different once you enter into such agreement. But we don't have the agreement in place.
One small correction on there. Generally, it would be that their distribution rate tariff would be different. But I can't speak to Fortis' distribution rate tariff setup right now. I just don't know. My understanding is, of course, they take into account the return on investment. But one other point I want to provide some clarity to is that it would be my opinion that if I was the landlord and that tenant moved out, I would tear the three-phase meter out as fast as I could and get it back to single phase. No question. I want that thing out of there immediately. Because your distribution and your charges are going to be so high to keep it there.
Do we know, do we have any idea how long our lease is looking at? That's something that would be interesting to know.
I think it would be a pretty safe bet to say that it's a five-year lease. Probably a couple of renewals in it. But without knowing.
It would be interesting to know what we're looking at in terms of for us.
I'm just speaking to. I'm just speaking to business sense. I mean, with the amount of renovations and kitchen and all that they're putting in there...
I would imagine that they're probably...
He said $20,000 to $30,000 is what he said they're putting into it. So they're not walking away from it.
They're going to be there for a while anyways.
Well, that was the comment I was going to say. Is there a way to get a guarantee for them that they're going to be there for a few years?
I don't know that we can get a guarantee.
Their landlord can with their lease.
But it would be interesting to maybe ask the question.
Well, again, to me, that's where the value comes up with us doing the $5,100, where it's not cash that we're putting out.
Right, exactly.
It's already budgeted money. If it doesn't work, then we have, we've given an investment to it. We're making a commitment to it.
Right. It's a risk. We're taking a risk. But it's maybe not a bad risk. Okay, so Jeff, do you want to add two cents?
Just so the numbers are correct, I pulled up Fortis' investment level. And I don't know where a business like this would fit. I don't know what their distribution tariff rate class would be. No idea. So they have one, two, they have three that potentially would fit. So they have small general service. So these are their non-residential, non-farming, non-lighting, which is $5,766 base investment plus $918 per kilowatt of peak demand. Their other one is general service less than 2 megawatts, which is again $5,766 plus $918 per kilowatt of the first 150 kilowatt plus 115 additional kilowatt. And they have an over 2 megawatt. And I can't imagine for a minute this is over 2 megawatt demand. So in both cases, the base is $5,766. I just want that correct number to be out there.
Not $5,300.
I had $5,300. I was wrong, so it's $5,700. Okay, so...
Jeff? Just with Fortis, I just want to kind of bring this to parity with what we collect. Fortis collects for distribution and transmission, is that correct?
Right.
We collect, all we can collect for is distribution in our community.
That's another one that's a yes and no. So it depends on their arrangement. If they are managing a utility for an REA, a municipality or a region, they're probably just the beneficiary of the distribution. And I would also, I just don't know. Like in our situation, transmission is a flow-through for us. So we keep the distribution, we charge for the transmission, but it's a flow-through based on what it's set. I don't know in all of their areas. I have a feeling they have a variety of agreements. Because they're not the full transmission contractor.
No.
A good portion of that has to go somewhere.
Yeah.
They're not Altalink. They're not a couple of those big companies that are charging us all for those large installations. So they may be a recipient of some. But I don't think they're the recipient of the majority of the transmission in all cases. Just not familiar enough.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. One more question?
And again, maybe with that motion, to give administration the only way in principle to create a contract favorable or comparable to the Fortis concept there. Because it sounds like there's a little bit of a rate hike for a season upfront where they try to recoup that. And if there was something similar to that in this contract, maybe not quite the final thing that we end up doing, but something similar. And then if the lows agree to that, I think that would be in line with the intention.
Can we do that within our rate? Our rates are set by bylaw. So we can't arbitrarily for one individual change their rate.
That's right.
That has to be part of our bylaw.
So...
I don't think you could. I think you'd have to respect the rate class and treaty.
Right. Treat the whole rate, the whole class.
So what needs to be done is when we have that new policy down, done, that new policy needs to integrate some kind of hike on the rates?
Could we do that in that policy? Isn't that what Fortis does?
To be determined.
I'd have to investigate, Counselor. I'm not sure.
But that's why I'm saying, since we don't know here, we put in the motion that administration just does the best they can with what they can get in the next few days as far as information with this one particular pilot.
But rates are bylaws. So we have to pass a motion specifically on that bylaw.
Well, yeah, but bylaws can, I mean, we do it all the time. We revisit a bylaw, we revisit a bylaw, we amend a bylaw, and then we make a retroactive decision to...
But our rate bylaws have to be public hearings. We can't just change that.
No, no, no. And I'm not saying we just change it. I'm saying with the initiation of this electrical system investment policy that we've already passed, we're basically directing administration to come at us with integrating that into our rate policy as it is. So we know we're revisiting that. We're going to have to open up that whole can of worms anyway. I'm saying with this particular one, get a contract that fits this. And if we have to go retroactive after the hearing and after the change and whatever, whatever...
Controptic...
But we give administration the flexibility to negotiate on our behalf.
Can I ask administration, how do you view us going with that? What would be your recommendation? Right now, we have a motion on the floor. Does it need to be tweaked or not?
Are we talking about the motion to investigate an investment program?
No.
$5,100.
Which is $5,100 at this point.
I don't know what to tell you there, Counsel. I don't, if that's where you want to go, I wouldn't say it's a good or bad amount. I don't have an opinion on it.
No, it's not the amount. It's the recommendation of Counselor Pivoy to have a contract to, a contract built in.
What is the purpose of the contract? That's the vision I'm not getting yet.
Yeah.
I guess, to be clear, would I be obligated to do...
In either, at this point.
I can clarify. People are unclear.
Let's do.
In the future, once we have an electrical system investment policy, I'm guessing there will be terms in there where there's a short-term hike in the rate for, to try to recoup that investment. And that's what we've been talking about, that most likely Fortis has something like that.
And to be determined. I'd have to do a lot more investigation to it. I just don't know.
Right.
I'm hoping to get very familiar with Pinocca soon. I'm meeting with Kevin Phillips on Thursday morning in Calgary. And that's one of the topics on our agenda because he helped him craft that. So it's possibly for sure. I have some initial concerns in my head about discriminating within a distribution rate tariff class.
Exactly.
I see that problematic. But at the same time, like I said before, if we are increasing the demand and the usage by making the investment, we're going to see that return based on their peak demand distribution fees.
Okay.
So, but we have to make sure that number matches a good return on investment too. You know, this is going to take a little bit of figuring and a lot of scenarios. But I'm hoping that smart people have done this before us so we can ride their coattails to a large degree.
Counselor Pivoy?
It just occurred to me that the town is also billed on peak demand, you know, over a year. That our rates are, you know, if our peak of our community goes up and if...
That's what we pay.
Then it boosts our...
Transmission fluctuates accordingly.
Our total, you know, transmission, I guess, rates or whatever. I mean, I just think, you know, something that we need to consider is, you know, if a business coming in is going to increase our, you know, the total of our peak demand, you know, we'll have to recoup that as well somehow.
The theory is that transmission always remains a flow-through. So we anticipate the new peak, we estimate the charge that's coming to us, and we flow it through. That's the best we can do.
Yeah.
You know, these little, small ones, one or two off, probably aren't going to blip the map too significantly. But you're right, a refrigeration company wants to come in. We better be darn sure that they're paying us probably $15,000 to $20,000 a year in transmission fees to offset that cost. Absolutely.
Yeah.
But the hope is that we're always estimating appropriately for a flow-through.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote?
Does everybody remember what the motion is? Just clarify.
Yeah, just to clarify the existing one.
Would you please read the motion for us, please?
Moved by Counselor Barfus, and then the labor costs of the electrical installation project for Max Low. This is, it would be more than... The labor costs for the electrical installation project for Max Low, they waived, they may have approximately $5,100.
$5,100.
$5,100 is the number.
Exactly.
See, you know, unfortunately, we're wording it as a fee wave. And I think we're...
I think that's the only way it can be. That's the only way it can be.
Right. So I don't, I don't see how...
It's a cost sharing, really.
It is, but as it is, our policy states that the private person has to pay for everything.
Yeah.
So in order for us to not have them pay for everything, we have to waive a portion of that fee, right? So what I'm suggesting is just waiving the portion that's not cash out of the town's pocket.
Jeff?
I don't want to play wordsmith, but if that's a concern, you can just say that the fee for connection for them is this amount. Your motion reads that the fee to connect three-phase power for Max Low is $10,000, whatever dollars.
Yeah. Okay. So opposed to the $15,000.
I'm simply moving some words around here. But you're essentially, instead of waiving anything that hasn't been charged, you haven't billed them anything.
Okay, just deduct.
So you're essentially setting a new installation rate. Because he has not been invoiced.
So from the $14,370, we deduct $5,100.
Does that address your concern? Does that's...
No, I totally understand what you're trying to state.
Well, at no point in the intention of this motion, the way it's currently worded, it may be what it means is a whereas, you know, whereas pursuant to, you know, the upcoming investment policy, you know, you have resolved this particular application, installation fee, go in at, you know, whatever it is.
I'd accept that as a friendly...
I think it's nice to have that in there. So later, if someone's like, what the heck did you do? And we say, oh, we instituted a new policy. And in pursuant to that, we made this decision.
Well, you could have also as whereas, our council is interested in attracting business.
Yeah. So why don't we add two whereases to this? One, that whereas that we have adopted a new policy for investment.
No.
You haven't adopted a policy.
We have moved to pursue...
We've moved to pursue adopting a new policy.
Having administration adopt one.
And whereas we...
And whereas the council wants to do what it can to attract new business. And therefore...
In equity and fairness.
In equity and fairness, sure. And...
Because we are politicians after all.
And then, did you want to have it be the fee or did you want to have it be the wave?
Well, either one. I like the idea of the fee. That's murder. The fee.
You know what? Graham is there recording and I pity him right now.
Yeah.
So...
He's shot me a dirty look twice.
Could we have that wording done properly so that we have a proper motion in place?
So Graham, what I'm amending that to is that the fee be set at $9,270.90 for the connection as opposed to it being a waiver.
Okay. And then what was the second whereas? Council's interested in attracting business?
Correct.
New business to the community.
I would move that we extend the meeting to 8:30.
We will do that as soon as we finish this.
Let's finish the motion that...
You're not really in session anymore because your time's expired.
That's okay. We'll finish this one. Then we can extend.
All in favor? Yes. Go ahead, Counselor.
I have moved that we extend the meeting to 8:30.
We'll just make it nine and then we don't have to extend again just in case we go later.
Please.
Should be okay.
All in favor?
We'll give our best shot anyway.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Counsel. It's been a long drawn affair, but you know what? It was worth talking about and really try to understand how we can do better things for our community. Thank you. No financial reports, so let's move on to nine committee and other reports. There's a COW report.
Yeah, we've read the COW report already.
And if you have, yes, for your information, committees, committee reports, different reports. Thank you so much for still sending your reports. I appreciate your comments.
Just briefly.
There is, can I just talk about something? Counselor Vaughn, you spoke to me about an upcoming meeting out of town, but you don't have it in your report at all.
Which meeting were you going to?
You're going to the library meeting in Lasbridge, are you?
Oh, yeah. That was this past weekend, Friday and Saturday.
Yeah.
And I haven't done the report for that meeting yet.
Okay, all right, fine.
Yeah, because that was just this weekend and I have to do a report yet.
If you have, if you have upcoming outside-of-town meeting coming, can you make sure that you let everyone know ahead of time? So if it's not your regular committee meeting, if it's an extra, like going to a conference or whatever, let's make sure that everybody kind of knows what's going on.
So on that note, then there will be a meeting I'll be attending on Monday.
Yes.
The Chief Mountain Best Practices Studies.
Right. And Counselor Barfus, reading through the COW, which is the next one, are you able to make that meeting in March? I don't know where it's being...
It's in April, is it?
April 24th.
April 24th.
I don't know whether they're holding it.
April.
Do you know whether they're holding it?
Hasn't been announced. Champion.
In Champion? Okay, all right. So that is something that it's good to know. Anything else, Counselor Van Groot?
In my report of the Diamond Willow Schnepp Foundation, Counselor Pivoy has been recommended to go to the ASIA Conference. And his per diems and everything will be picked up by the Schnepp Foundation.
And when is that meeting, Counselor?
That meeting is next month.
Okay. And then you have the Alberta Southwest. I don't know where that's going to take place, but outside of town somewhere. There is...
Have they moved those meetings around?
Yes, every month.
These are once a year.
No, you're talking Alberta Southwest. Southwest, yeah.
Correct. The next one's in 405.
Okay.
Counselor Edmonds?
I have a community futures meeting, the 17th to 18th of April, in Lasbridge.
So we are really a busy council. My goodness. We are really busy. There was something ordered to us. Oh, yes. I remember. Counselor Vaughn, I read, no, it was not Counselor Vaughn, Counselor Barfus. I think it is the Solid Waste Authority. I don't know if you saw the increase in their requisition?
Yes.
4%?
Yes.
And do you feel is justifiable?
Yes.
Are they cutting some fat there?
There will be some more, hopefully, cutting of the fat. But there wasn't a lot of room to move on with this.
Okay, all right. Counselor Pivoy, thank you for, and Counselor Van Groot, both of you for being our advocates at the table. Your requisition came down $2,000 over last year, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes.
I just, yeah, I've got a comment on the solid waste. But I wanted to ask Dennis first on the library. Right in the first area, you've got the people in attendance, and you've got Wendy Creed excused with permission.
Oh, it was Wendy, Wendy West.
My wife had just kind of a little flabbergasted.
I'm really happy somebody's reading on. Okay.
Can I make a comment to you?
Please, go ahead.
On the solid waste, because I noticed one item I had a question on, but it kind of relates to another thing that they were talking about, only depreciating one truck at a time.
Yes.
I thought for best practice, you know, best accounting practices, that was a little strange.
Yeah.
But, you know.
So in regards to that, I was actually not at that meeting because that was during my blank time.
Yeah.
I have sent a couple of emails to a couple of the other members on there. I don't know how you can possibly only.
Well, I don't.
Vehicle at a time.
No, I. Practices is a little.
There's a couple of trucks, they want to depreciate just one. Three trucks, they want to depreciate just one at a time.
You can't do that.
Okay. My concern is.
Our auditor will not allow that.
No.
My concern is that if it looks good in the requisition, upcoming requisition, because right now what they're doing, they're amortizing, but they're also requisitioning for amortization. So right now what they're doing, they're saving some of that money away from the requisition for now. But in the future, when those trucks are totally depreciated, lo and behold, what will happen to the requisition at that point when they need to replace those trucks? Had me a little bit concerned.
So that was actually why, one of the backgrounds between the increase in the requisition is that it's actually to help start funding the depreciation fully because it's not being funded right now.
Right.
Right.
And this was the comment I had is because, you know, I've been on the solid waste authority before and what they do, like as a town, we don't budget, you know, depreciate for amortization.
Yeah.
They do because it has been their only source of funding for when they have to purchase a new truck. My thought was is that there's many municipalities that are contributing to that and, you know, when we need, when we need a new piece of equipment or, you know, very high capital expenditure, then we look for grants. Maybe the solid waste authority can't do that, but I'm thinking, you know, regional collaboration is kind of getting to be a big thing and that maybe they should consider regional collaboration grant when they buy their new trucks and then stop, you know, requisitioning for all of the, you know, for this huge appreciation account.
So as you probably know from the best practice of study itself.
And that's something.
That was not a grant that actually Chief Mountain Solid Waste applied for.
Yes, I know.
We had to apply for it as a town because the authority cannot apply for grants.
They can't, but maybe the town could apply when they, you know, or Raymond or somebody could say for the solid waste authority, we need a new truck and.
That's a possibility.
Counselor Creed, there are many recommendations that are coming out of that best practice, the one being the creation of a commission.
Sure.
I think once we have a commission, then that kind of.
Then a law.
So there's a lot of changes that are impending, so we will have those things coming out.
Solid Waste Commission as opposed to authority?
We're not there yet.
If it changed, I mean, there's still, like I said, the actual best practice of study hasn't been presented to us yet. That'll happen on Monday. Then we'll start going through each of the recommendations and seeing what's there. But one of them is to go to a commission.
I can just tell you that the full town, the full.
Raymond McGrath.
Raymond McGrath, Carson and Sterling are in favor of a commission, but how the commission is designed is a different story.
Now that said, there's thirteen voices.
Yeah. It could be four people, four town creating a commission and the other being outside member but paying into the commission. It's a complicated model that needs to be investigated. Counselor Van Groot?
I'm still questioning why does the regional solid waste have a contingency fund? I mean, when you requisition, do you take a percentage of that money and put it in a contingency fund?
So there's a couple of funds there. One is the closure fund.
Yes.
So that's one of the.
You have to.
That one has to be.
Closure closure.
That one has to build up over time.
For sale every year.
At the end, when you close it all off. Yeah, as each cell gets closed, there's costs that are incurred on that that have to be amortized for the rest, forever, because there's gases and everything else that has to be dealt with that those funds have to be there for. So we're required to have those funds in place.
See, with E M S services, every time we requisition, there's a portion of that, a percentage of that goes into a savings fund or whatever you want to call it. And that's what we're working on right now.
There is an account there, like for example, this last, this last meeting, we actually transferred some money out of that account, fifty thousand dollars, to help with operations until after all of our requisitions come in and then that fifty thousand dollars will be transferred back in. So there is a, there is a bunch there.
All right. So thank you so much for all your work and thank you for those conversations. Sometime we need to be a little bit enlightened.
Mayor?
None, yes, I'm sorry, sorry.
Thanks. I just think that, and I appreciate all these committee reports, the only thing I was going to say about them was that, me personally as a counselor, I'd like to see some of these reports reduced down to relevant to this council. So, maybe, but relevant to this council. I mean, if your elevators at the Schnup go down, I maybe don't want to read about it, although I'm on that committee, so that was of interest to me. As opposed to, you know, some of us are entering the whole minutes, people in attendance, and I'm just thinking maybe for the sake of our reports, it should be a summary of things, perhaps even relevant to the council at large.
If I didn't put in the people that were attending, I wouldn't have made that mistake. Is that what you're saying?
Counselor?
I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, it is a bit cumbersome to go through. Now granted, I know there's certain two functions. Number one, to keep all the council appraised as to what's going on in the committees. Number two, and this is probably where we need more detail, if another counselor has to step in for any reason, they can just go back and review what that specific council's been up to.
What you're saying makes sense.
Seems like there's quite a bit that's being included that maybe as a town council, we don't need to be.
Okay. Well, that is something.
Mention about some in-camera discussions that, you know, maybe shouldn't have been mentioned.
To tell you the truth, I had forwarded that to be kind of.
Right, I understand. And that's a very sensitive, and actually that's relevant to all of us. We all need to follow that.
I didn't write it to be published.
No, right.
I gave it to Counselor Vaughn to do something. Okay. So here is the next thing that we need to think of. In the report of George Kauf, there is a, what would you call it? A recommendation?
A template.
A recommendation to use a specific template.
Right.
And if you go in the Last Bridge site, you will see the way they do it is one page and no more than one page. And maybe there is something there to be said. Administration has a great smile on his face, maybe it can help us understand what would make administration more comfortable moving forward. Would you like to bring that template forward and help us for next months to stay within that, those parameters? Which is about, what is that, one page, about four hundred, four hundred and fifty words?
Make them a hundred, two pages or less.
Now, you know something, you need to have certain amount of meaning. If I take a report and I cannot understand what's going on, if I have to go to your meeting, I'm not happy.
Well, understandably, some committees have more detail than others.
Yeah, okay.
I'll take partial blame for Counselor Pivoy's concern. Some of your committees have minute takers that do official minutes and they forward them to me.
Right.
So I have.
In lieu of a summary.
And all, so I haven't gone through and attempted to summarize what.
What you shouldn't have to do.
Yeah, so I didn't want to do that. So I am literally taking from solid waste authority, for example, Schnup Foundation, you've got, you've got people taking official minutes. I'm just copying and pasting from your reports, so that's partially.
And in that case, I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah.
So the minutes were all I had.
I think when you're not at the meeting, it kind of makes sense to provide the minutes.
Well, Mayor, in my report, if you look at it, the things that I discussed in this report have, it has, are meat and gravy. There are meat, potatoes and gravy stuff. And I know you as a mayor may have contact with the seniors in the community, so they might be contacting you and saying, hey, you know, what's happening with our board here at the Schnup Foundation because they're doing this and that? And I want all of the council to be aware of what's happening with our senior citizens because they are, you know, people who establish.
I suggest you drop the gravy.
Pardon me?
I suggest you drop the gravy.
Okay, all right. The bill will be a little bit drier. Let's move on, counsel.
Do we need to accept the unsolicited advice?
No, we're not quite, we're not quite finished. Nine D E H S Captain Service Plan, this is for your information. It's a very good report. The nine E.
Before you go on, Mayor, the one thing that bothers me is that we're tied in with the KINI area, so all of our statistics are way above the provincial level.
Okay. Can I speak to that? We addressed that when we were at that meeting. But you also have to realize that because those numbers included, we have a hospital.
That's what gets us our new hospital.
Yes, if you look at all those numbers, we should have a new hospital today.
A long time ago.
And I totally.
That's our argument.
I totally agree, and this is what I'm pushing forward. In fact, because we now have this document, I will now redraft a letter to Minister Mandel since he didn't reply at this point to our first letter and giving you facts that will hopefully.
Meat, potatoes and gravy.
Hopefully help us to move forward to the business case which we badly need in order to move to the next step with Alberta Infrastructure starting to look at our proposal and the Treasury starting to hopefully come forward with some money if our project is approved. But this is a long, long time coming. It won't be tomorrow. What Sean Chuton told us is the day the business case is approved, they're still talking six, seven years before Shavon start to turn the soil. So we need to really at this point be politically pushing forward and active towards putting pressure on a system because if we don't, we will lose again an opportunity. We need to have our M L A, we need to push forward, there's no doubt in my mind, and the county will need to help us.
We also need to push for federal money because most of our patients are from the reserve.
Counselor, that is the big question mark. And this is where the provincial and the federal at this time don't really work together. And that's the difficulty. So I don't know where we're going with that one. I wouldn't count, I wouldn't count on a federal helping us right now, to tell you the truth.
I appreciate the urgent nature of immediate follow-up now that we have the report. I also think in light of recent events, you know, just in the last week and a half, we have a municipality declaring a medical state of emergency.
Right.
That might add some weight, you know, some pressure because we're talking about pressure.
Yeah.
There's some pretty serious medical pressure in this part of the province right now.
Yeah, well, we advocated for a detox center for a long, long time in this area and we don't have one. Okay. Let's move on. The South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. What you have here is a little bit of a condensed version of the impact of the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan on future land use policies. So when we are going to review the land use policy, we will be well advised to have those, those points clear in our mind because. Did you read that whole document?
I did.
Okay, well, the whole document is definitely, and the document is not yet complete. So correspondence. Mayors and Rebs letter to Minister Mandel. As you can see from this letter from different municipalities, we presented at the Mayors and Rebs, a letter was sent to Minister Mandel kind of speaking to the issue that many rural towns have regarding practitioner staying in their town and offering their services. And what I wanted to know is this council interested in having administration add our town's voice to that general voice in support of that initiative?
I think that would be great.
Okay. So maybe that's a recommendation for administration? Jeff? Arca? Anybody wants to talk about this one? No? Okay. The last one is a little bit of a new item that was brought to us today. I allowed it to be here because it might be interesting for us to know. I have many questions regarding that letter, but Counselor Pivoy, if you mind to talk about it?
Yeah, sure. Basically, the directors of the One Heart event here coming up on March twenty eighth were looking for just maybe a letter of support from council was primarily, they also asked for a donation. When I spoke to Sharon specifically, I said, you know, I don't know if, you know, with the short notice that we had, if it'd come through with any money or funds for this concert, but I don't see why it wouldn't, because, I mean, this is in direct response to their current health emergency. They're getting some pretty big names in, you know, the First Nations rock bands and different things to come. They are hopeful, and again, it's just a hope, that they're hoping that the neighboring municipalities will show some support by maybe a mayor or councilors being sent. But at the time, just, you know, to be frank, she wasn't sure that the chief and council were going to support the event. It's very grassroots, it's very, you know, from the people trying to find solutions the best they know how. So one thing I understand, I talked to Counselor Brewsthead a little bit and he said, again, yes, a letter, a letter from Cardston showing, you know, concern and support would come across very well, you know, just extending that olive branch, saying, hey, we in Cardston are very concerned with our neighbor's, you know, state of emergency, willing to help call us if there's anything you can do, that kind of thing. He said that would go a long way and, you know, something for this council.
I think, I think there is two different issues there.
Sure.
One is dealing with the blood tribe and I think there's merit in what you're saying. I really think that at this point, we have a head of police committee that is trying to work with our practitioner, especially Dr. Plefair and who works in tandem with Dr. Tailfences. And I really would love to have one of them at a table or both of them at a table working to, towards the issue of drug addiction to this O C eighty, which is what the O C M P is asking us to look into right now. And we are still going to make that contact correction for that, for the next meeting. So that we write a letter to chief and council, I wouldn't be opposed to such an initiative. Would something like that, I mean, this is two different stories. This is a grassroots. What interests me is really the political aspect because that is something that we have tried to, to achieve for a while and if maybe that is a venue, I am all for it.
I would love to see a letter of support sent. I think I'm just at a bare minimum.
Would you like to put a motion forward, counsel?
Sure. I'll move that we send a letter of support to the.
Chief and council?
Chief and council. Where the current national state of emergency, local state of emergency, local variation. We'll consider that.
Yeah.
They're right, okay.
Okay. All right. Questions regarding that letter? Not this, we're talking about two different things. That's still always a political.
Let's deal with this one first.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Yes?
Counselor Edman sounds like a big I told you so coming here because it's a year.
Yeah. No, I know the big I told you so because.
Oh, yeah, right. So that's a great.
Counselor Edman, please do us a favor.
Hold on. Oh, yeah.
No, hold it on.
I will move that we extend the meeting for four minutes.
Four minutes, okay, all right. All in favor? Come on. So this is a.
What's two hundred tickets going to cost is my question. Twenty-five dollars.
It's five thousand dollars.
We're not doing that. The lane.
Okay. So this.
Now, that said, we just approved four hundred dollars for some kids to come through on bikes. It might be appropriate for us to donate something.
Yeah.
Maybe not, maybe not a ticket of four hundred dollars.
Can I, can I suggest something? We have a donation policy and what we did earlier on fits the donation policy. This is outside the parameter, but if we want to show support, would it be possible by way of posters in a community, an individual being willing to participate to do something of that sorts, giving the community the opportunity to do so? I don't know what that.
There's posters all over town regarding this already. My, my concern is the optics of it. I understand the policy. I agree with you.
Can, can I suggest that if we do make a donation, would be more to the, I don't know if that's the right organization to make it to?
And that I would be a hundred percent supportive of, that maybe we make some kind of a donation to some formal blood tribe organization that the chief and council will put together, then that might be more appropriate, but I just.
I mean, I mean that we do it, I don't know if the Red Cross is involved in that. I don't know what is involved in that.
Well, it says here that.
Not, not this one. This one is the. This one is just a.
I'm not interested in doing this.
There's a line here that concerns me because I don't understand it. Is the funds raised will be used to build a grassroots community.
I don't understand that either.
I don't know what that means. I have an idea of what that means, and I'm not certain that's where council wants to be doing it. I just don't understand the formality of it.
And again, that's where I'm coming from, from the perspective of it would be nice to be able to show some serious support to the Blood Tribe.
I think the greatest support you can show is that letter of support. And I have, interestingly, without knowing all this, when I heard about the event on the Blood Tribe, I had sent Dexter and sent from our council a two-word, two-liner saying that we are very concerned and offer our condolences to the chief and council and families affected and that if there is something we can do in working together, we would love to do so. And mention that we have a head of committee that is trying to work on that issue. And mention the two positions that we are trying to conduct. So I had done that prior to knowing anything about this. So.
I'll move to her.
Thank you. All in favor? No need to do this, guys.
The time limit?
Don't follow me.
Yep, we're at the time limit.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your hard work. It was a long meeting, but I think we accomplished lots today.
Yes.
I really think it was a fruitful meeting.
We'll see you in the morning at eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
See you bright and early, folks.